Peace be upon you, this is Said Mirza from within our reason dot com. And we're gonna be looking at chapter number twenty, this is a continuation of my Quran study session. And we stopped off at chapter nineteen, finished that, so we're gonna continue on with chapter twenty. In the name of God, the Almighty, the merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. Ta ha. Now, these are the mysterious letters, the muqattat. And my understanding is that wherever they show up in the beginning of the chapter. Um, that is the start of a new book within the Quran, the Quran is divided into books. And each book has a specific audience and has a specific purpose. So, let's continue, we have not sent down upon thee the Quran that thou be wretched. But only as a reminder to him who fears. A revelation from him who created the earth and the high heavens, or a successive revelation. From him who created the earth and the high heavens, so. Uh, the purpose of the Quran is not that the recipient of the Quran be wretched, who was Muhammad, that he be distressed. But it is, it is to be a reminder to him who fears. And it is a revelation from him who created the earth and the high heavens. And then God um. Gives one of his names here, the Almighty established himself upon the throne. There, there are many names of God in the Quran. Uh, right now, he's referring to his power, uh, by which he created the earth and the high heavens. To him belongs what is in the heavens and what is in the earth and what is between them and what is under the soil, as in his is everything. Uh, in the heavens, in the earth, or what is between them and what is under the soil. Now, just to stop off, the Quranic uh idea of the cosmology. Uh, is, is not that there's an ever, a never ending space, nothing like that, and that's the stuff that. You know, we, we've been taught, but. The Quranic uh point of view is that there's the earth, which is a fixed uh flat earth. And then above that, there are seven uh skies, really. And above that is the throne of God. Um, and so God created the heavens and the earth in six days, and then he established himself upon the throne and he directs the matter completely. This is what the Quran says. And if thou be public in speech, then he knows the secret and what is more hidden. God, there is no God save he, to him belong the best names, so. Uh, he already gave us one name of his, the Almighty. Uh, he's, he also, he also called himself the merciful, uh, the bestore, the wise, uh, the all high. Um, there's many names of God in the Quran. And has they come to thee, the story of Musa, Moses, so now, uh. God is going to be giving us the story of Musa, if you know, Musa was sent. As a messenger to the uh, to Pharaoh, Pharaoh. And uh, he was also uh, his, one of his mission was to deliver the children of Israel. And he was a prophet to them, as in he received um, the, the book from God, the writ of God. And uh, so he had a dual purpose, and he was also given two signs, uh, which is going to be revealed here. So, let's read on, when he saw a fire and said to his people, stay here, I perceive a fire, I might bring you there from a fire burn or find at the fire guidance. So, if you know anything about the story of Musa in the Quran, this has already been talked about earlier, Musa was in the desert. Uh, he was traveling and he um. Well, I shouldn't say he was in the desert, I don't know where he was, but anyway, he was traveling with his family uh, in the night and uh, it seems like they were lost. Because uh, when he saw a fire, he said to his people, stay here, I perceive a fire. And I might bring you there from a fire burn or find at the fire guidance. So, uh, this, this is the setup, now let's read on. Eleven, and when he came to it, he was called, oh, Musa, oh, Moses, I am thy lord. So remove thou thy sandals, thou art in the sacred valley of Tuwa, so. Uh, this sacred valley of Tuwa is also called Majdil Aksa in the Quran, it means the uh, the furthermost. Um, place of submission. And um, we don't know where this place is anymore, but anyway, this is where he was given his commission. Musa was given his commission and God spoke to him. Um, outwardly first, he was called, oh, Musa, and then, uh, then he was. Uh, then God spoke to him inwardly, and this is what I think connects with here, and if thou be public in speech. Then he knows the secret and what is more hidden, so. Uh, let's see what God reveals to him. And I have chosen thee, so here can, here can thou to what is revealed, or to the inspiration. I am God, there is no God save I, so serve thou me and uphold thou the duty for my remembrance. Okay, so this is what Mu- Musa was um, revealed. Uh, was revealed to Musa, I am God, there is no God save I, so serve thou me and uphold thou the duty. For my remembrance, now this alone makes you, well. After reading this, you know that there's other duties besides remembrance of God, right, that's what we get out of this. That uphold, because if, if the, the salat, which is the Muslims' understanding as a ritual prayer, which is the remembrance of God. Uh, if that's all this word me meant, salat, duty, then there would be no need to say for my remembrance, but because it says uphold thou. Waqimu salatu le zikri. Um, it says uphold thou the duty for my remembrance, that means that there are other salats as well, and really salat is a generic term that just means to. Uphold the commandments of God, that's all it means. So definitely, service of God, remembrance of God, calling to him, asking him for help, these are all duties upon the believers. Fifteen, the hour is coming, I almost conceal it, that every soul might be rewarded for that for which it strives. And let not turn thee away from it, him who believes not in it, but follows his way in desire, or thou wilt perish. Now, this is really the, uh, the meat of, of what. Um, the doctrine of God is, that we believe in one God. Uh, there is no God save him, serve him alone, uphold the duty for his remembrance, and to believe in the hour. To expect the hour and uh, to strive for, for the, for the garden with, with our. Resources with our, in, in the truest sense of the word, this is what the doctrine of God is all about. See, there's nothing, no talk about a religion here, if you're paying attention. It doesn't say, you know, you can work to Judaism. Uh, there's no initiation here. And what is in thy right hand, oh, Musa, now this is uh, God, uh, God gave Musa two signs. Um. And he also made two prophets, Musa and his brother Haruna both made prophets here. Um, the, the, the pair thing, the, the two thing I've talked about earlier too, this is woven in the fabric of the Quran. Um, anyway, so, what is in thy right hand, oh, Musa, so he is now being uh, given two signs to take to Pharaoh as evidence for his messengership. Said he, here is my staff, I lean on it and beat down there with leaves for my sheep, and I have there for other uses. He said, cast thou it down, oh, Musa, Moses. And he cast it down, and then was it a serpent moving? He said, take thou it and fear thou not, we will return it to its former state. And draw thou thy hand into thy bos- bosom, it will come forth white without evil as another proof. That we might show thee some of our greater proofs. Go thou to Pharaoh, he has transgressed. He said he, my lord, expand thou for me my breast, and ease thou for me my affair. And loosen thou the knot from my tongue, that they might understand my speech. So it seems that uh, Musa had an impediment of speech that he is asking God to um. To fix. And appoint thou for me an assistant for my family. Aaron, Harun, my brother. Strengthen thou by him my strength, and make thou him share in my affair, that we might glorify thee much and remember thee much. Thou dost see us. So here, see, he's reiterating what salat for God's remembrance is about, that we might glorify thee much and remember thee much. See, there is no ritual prayer here, like, you know, the traditionalist loves to say salat, is this. It's really yoga, you know, it's, it's a set of movements that have to be done a certain way with certain things that need to be recited, but this is just generally glorifying and remembering God. He said, thou hast been granted thy request, oh, Musa, and we bestowed favor upon thee another time. When we instructed thy mother with what was instructed, see, this is the second thing again here. Hurl thou him into the chest and hurl thou it into the water, the water will cast him upon the shore. And I mean, enemy to me and an enemy to him will take him. And I cast upon thee love from me, and that thou be wrought under my eye. When thy sister went and said, shall I direct you to one who will take care of him? So we returned thee to thy mother, that her eye might be comforted and grieve not. And thou didst call, kill a soul, and we delivered thee from distress and subjected thee to means of denial by a trial. And thou didst carry among the people of Madyan, then camest thou as ordained, oh, Musa. And I chose thee for myself. Go thou and thy brother with my proofs and flag not in my remembrance. Okay, so, to back up here. Actually, there's really not much here, I mean, you can understand it, you, basically God instructed uh, Moses. Mo- Mo- Moses, uh, Musa's uh, mother, to throw him into the river. Uh, in a, to, in a chest, and he was then carried to the shore. And there Pharaoh and his wife picked him up and God put uh, love for. Musa and Pharaoh's wives hard, so that's why Pharaoh did not slay him right there and then. And uh, then he was returned back to his mother. Uh, that uh, her eye might be comforted and grieve not. And then he killed. A man, uh, Musa, and then he ran away from that place. And then he went to Madyan, there he met two girls. Uh, helped them with their, with uh, drawing up water for their flocks, and then they told. Uh, their hmm, father, and he, he wanted to meet Musa, so Musa came to him and he told him the whole story. And then um, you know, he married one of the daughters of that man and he stayed in Madyan for a while. That's uh, discussed elsewhere. And I chose thee for myself. Okay, I read all this, okay, go to Pharaoh, he has transgressed, and speak to him a gentle word that he might take heed or fear. They said, now this is Musa and Harun speaking. Our lord be feared lest he hasten against us, or that he will transgress. He said, fear not, I am with you, hearing and seeing. Go to him, so go to him and say, we are the messengers of thy lord, so send thou the children of Israel with us and punish thou them not. We have come to thee with a proof from thy lord, and peace be upon him who follows the guidance. It has been revealed to us that the punishment is upon him who denies and turns away. So, um, this is what uh, transpired at the Majdil Aksa. And uh, like I said, they uh. They were sent, uh, he was sent as a messenger and now it seems that uh, Harun as well. Uh, to go to Pharaoh and to warn him. That's what the messengers do, they are bearers of glad tidings and warnings. And when they're denied or ridiculed, or uh, in this case, uh, Pharaoh aggressed against uh, Musa. And that's when he was destroyed, that's how, that's the Sunat Allah, that's the practice of God. Okay, said he, now this is obviously the, this, this is a cut, now we're at, now, now this is the court of Pharaoh. So, they have gone there to warn him. So he says, uh, this is Pharaoh speaking, said he, and who is your lord, oh, Musa? He said, our lord is he who gave everything his creation then guided. Said he, and what is the case of the former generations? He said, the knowledge thereof is with my lord and a writ, my lord neither forget, neither earth nor forgets. Who made the earth for you as a bed and inserted roads for you therein, and sent down from the sky water, and thereby have we brought forth diverse kinds of plants. Um, eat and pasture your cattle in that are proofs for possessors of intelligence. Therefrom did we create you, and thereto will we return you, and therefrom will we bring you forth another time. And we showed him all our proofs, but he denied and refused. Now, my understanding is that all here means that it's not only the two proofs that Musa was given. At the Majdil Aksa, the, the, the throwing of the stick and becoming a serpent and his hand becoming white. Um, it's also referencing the proofs. See, the earth as a bed, roads for you so you can walk therein, sky, uh, water coming down from the sky. And the plants uh, growing from that water, and the cattle, these are all proofs. Uh, the Quran, the Quran rehashes these proofs again and again for us as well. Uh, these are all proofs of God. Anyway, he denied and refused. Um, and really now, at this point, his heart is sealed, because that's how it works, if you deny the proofs of God. Uh, then your heart is sealed, and then you will never believe until you see the punishment. Said he, hast thou come to turn us out of our land by thy sorcery, oh, Musa, so he thinks that this is sorcery that Musa is performing. Um. Anyway, to continue, then will we bring thee sorcery the like thereof, so make thou an appointment between us and thee, which neither we nor thou shall fail to keep, an equal place. He said, your appointment is the day of the festival, and let the people be gathered at midday. And Pharaoh turned away and gathered his clan, then he came. Moses said to him, woe to you, invent not a lie against God lest he utterly destroy you with a punishment, and he has failed to invents. And they disputed about their affair among themselves and ke- kept secret their private conversation. They said, these are two sorcerers who want to turn you out of your land by this sorcery and take away your exemplary tradition. So resolve upon your plan, then come with one accord, and he has succeeded who prevails this day. Or come with one, in one, in one rank, that's what the word suffer means. And he has succeeded who prevails this day. They said, oh, Musa, Moses, either thou wilt cast, or we will be the first to cast. He said, nay, you cast, and when their ropes and their staff seemed to him by this sorcery to be moving. And Moses conceived a fear within him, so, this is the sorcery that, that they were performing, that uh, it was an illusion. Their ropes and their staffs weren't actually moving, it seemed to him that they were moving, and this is really, I mean, the broader. Uh, picture is that, uh, this is the reason that Moses, Musa's story is, is spread in the Quran throughout. Uh, it's, it's actually, it occupies a lot of uh, s- space. In the text of the Quran, and the reason is that we are similarly living in a pharaonic system. Um, and if you want more information, I suggest you read my book Tyranny two point O. But uh, in a nutshell, what it is, is that this, this sorcery that they were performing. Uh, in modern parlance, or modern terminology, you would call that um. Um, propaganda. Um, uh, propaganda and, and brainwashing, this is really what it is, and they've, that you, they, they have convinced. The masses to see the world in a way, uh, that's not real, that's, they've, the, the elites are creating illusions. And the masses are, are terrified because of their illusions, when in reality. Um, there is a God, and that we will die, and we will be raised up. And um, and God alone controls our, our, our um. Provisions. Hmm, and uh, you know, we should be afraid of God, because God alone has the power, so this is the illusion, the illusion that the elites gave us is completely different than that. So anyway, to continue. We said, fear thou not, thou art the uppermost, and cast thou what is in thy right hand. It will swallow up what they have wrought, they have wrought but the plan of a sorcerer, and the sorcerer will not be successful no matter where he goes. And the sorcerers cast themselves down in submission. They said, we have believed in the lord of Harun and Musa, Aaron and Moses, now. As you can tell, you have to read between the lines, that what happened was. Well, this is discussed elsewhere, so I'll just give you the, the nuts and bolts, what happened is that when Musa threw his staff, it uh, it um. It consumed, it devoured, it, it, it all the, uh, their, their illusion, okay? And when the sorcerers saw this, they understood that this was real. Okay, what they were doing was illusion, because they were the ones performing it, but when they saw what that Musa did, they. Uh, the miracle he performed, he understood that this was real, and um, and they believed. And uh. And this is what I mean, and the sorcerers cast themselves down in submission. Now, this has nothing to do with, with uh, going on all fours and prostrating, because if you just think about that, that. Are, are we saying that these, these men, these sorcerers uh, prostrated um. At the feet of Musa? And Harun? And, and these, these uh, these, these messengers of God would be okay with that, because the traditional understanding is that the word. Sajad means to, I mean, it's an act of worship. So obviously, they were not worshiping Musa or Harun. So, if we just understand that this word means the opposite of what uh, Pharaoh did, if you remember Pharaoh. Uh, when he saw the proofs of God, um. He denied and refused, see? So this is the opposite of denial and refusing, that's what the word sajadah means, to accept. Now, you could say that also they, they sat down, they lowered themselves. Uh, which, you know, makes a lot more sense, if you saw something like that. Uh, and really shook you to the core, you would sit down, right? But uh, definitely getting all, on your fours and uh. Rubbing your forehead on the ground makes no sense. Anyway, to continue, verse seventy-one, said he, you have believed him before I gave you leave, this is Pharaoh speaking, he is your chief who taught you sorcery. Then will I cut, then will I cut off your hands and your feet on opposite sides and crucify you on the trunks of dead palms. And you will know which of us is severe in punishment and more enduring. They said, we will not prefer thee over what has come to us of clear signs, or him who created us. So decide thou what thou will decide, thou canst but decide disorderly life. We have believed in our lord, that he might forgive us our offenses, and what did, and what thou didst compel us to of sorcery. And God is, God is better and more enduring. Verse seventy-four, whoso comes to his lord as a lawbreaker, for him is gehenna, he will neither die therein nor live. And whoso comes to him as a believer, having done righteous deeds. Those have the high degrees, gardens of a perpetual abode beneath which rivers slow. They abiding eternally therein, and what, that is a reward of him who purifies himself. Now, believer, okay, believe in God and last day. That's what the Quranic definition of this word is, believer, okay, and I, and I point you to chapter two, in the beginning. Where it talks about that, okay? Uh, having done righteous deeds, now this is righteous deeds, this is giving to the poor, being steadfast, patient. Wor- uh, worshiping God. Um, definitely in the sense that calling to him, remembering him. Um, reading his scripture, understanding it, applying it. Um. The traditionalists just have, has a very narrow understanding of this, and he just says it's just rituals that he's doing, that those are righteous, righteous deeds. Okay, and that is a reward of him who purifies himself, this is important, see, it's about, it's about cleansing yourself, it's about um. Getting rid of your impurities. This is important. Uh, religions don't do this, with, men who follow religions, they actually are more corrupt, because they just think, okay. They just, they found some shortcut or loophole, I know, I've, I've lived among Muslims all my life, so I know how the brain functions, how the mind functions. And I used to be one of them as well, I mean, I, I grew up, I mean, I was a Muslim in the sense that I was doing all the rituals. Anyway, to continue, seventy-seven, and we instructed Musa, travel thou by night with my servants, and strike thou for them a dry pat in the sea, neither fearing overtaking nor being afraid. And Pharaoh, Pharaoh followed them with his forces, and they covered them of the sea what covered them, so they were drowned. And Pharaoh, Pharaoh led his people astray and did not guide. Now, what's not mentioned here is that Pharaoh, when he saw the punishment, when he was being drowned, is when he uh, he believed in God and uh, you know, it was too late then. That's picked up somewhere else. Eighty, oh, children of Israel, we delivered you from your enemy, and we made an appointment with you on the right side of the mount, and we sent down upon you manna and quails, now this right side of the mount. This is the. This is the episode. Hmm. Yeah, okay, so it's, it's talked about later, so I'll just leave it at that right now, okay, so God sent down upon them manna and quails. Basically food. Eat of the good things that we provided you, and transgress not therein, lest my wrath descend upon you, and he upon whom my wrath descends has fallen. And I am all forgiving towards him who repents and believes and works righteousness, then is he guided. And what made thee hasten from thy people, oh, Musa? Said he, they were close in my footsteps, so I hastened to thee, my lord, that thou be pleased. He said, we have subjected thy people to means of denial in thy absence, and the Samadhi uh. Has led them astray. So Moses, Musa returned to his people wrathful and grieved, he said, oh, my people, did not your lord promise you a fair promise? Was the covenant long in coming for you? Or did you wish that wrath from your lord should descend upon you, so failed in your promise to me? They said, we failed not to keep our promise to thee of our own accord, but we were given to bear burdens of the adornment of the people, so we hurled them. And thus the Samadhi cast, and he brought forth for them a calf as a bo- body that load, and they said, this is your god, and the god of Moses, but he forgot. So, a lot of interpretation exists about this, or, you know, what did Samadhi throw, and, you know, um. I, I, I don't really get into that stuff, this is a specific instance of, of, basically, what we, what we get out of this is that. They were led astray by this guy, this, this Samadhi guy, okay? Because he was really a means of denial. To see, you know, he was a fitnah, fitnah in the Quranic terminology means like a temptation to, for guidance. Uh, for misguided, so, you know, they, they, they fell for this. Um, and this, this. Act, if you will, and they started worshiping this calf. Did they not see that it returned no word to them, nor possessed for them harm or benefit? Now, you know, I used, I, I thought about this long and hard, and really, I mean. This harm and benefit and returning no word to them, this, this is actually dealt with later on, because God actually speaks. Uh, they hear, the, the children of Israel hear God, okay, later, it's gonna be, we're gonna get to that. And God alone has uh. God alone has uh, our benefit and harm in his, in his uh, authority. And our Harun had said to them before, oh, my people, you are but subjected to means of denial thereby, and your lord is the Almighty, so follow me and obey my command. They said, we will not cease to be devoted to it until Musa returns to us. He said, oh, Harun, what prevented thee when thou sawest them going astray? From following me, didst thou then disobey my command? So this is Musa, he's obviously upset with Harun. Said he, oh, son of my mother, sees thou me not by my beard nor by my head. I feared lest thou say, thou hast caused division among the children of Israel, and hast not observed my word. He said, and what is thy case, oh, Samadhi? Said he, I saw what they saw not, saw not, so I took a handful from the track of the messenger and did throw it, and thus my soul enticed me. He said, then go thou for it, for in this life it is for thee to say outcast. And there is for thee an appointment thou canst not fail to keep, he's talking about judgment, you know. That you are being banished, and then there's an appointment for you on the day of judgment. And look thou, thou upon thy god to which thou remain devote. Rem- remain this devoted, we will burn it, then we'll be scattered in the sea with a blast. Your god is but God, there is no God save he, he encompasses all things in knowledge. Thus do we relate to thee from reports of what has gone before and have given thee a remembrance for, from us. So he encompasses all things in knowledge, and that's how God was able to reveal to us. Um, had, and that's why God revealed to us this account of Musa, which nobody knew, that's the implication. Thus do we relate to thee from reports of what has gone before and have given thee a remembrance from us. Whoso turns away from it, he will bear a burden on the day of resurrection. They abiding eternally therein, and evil is it for them on the day of resurrection as a load. The day the trumpet is blown, and we will assemble the lawbreakers that day wide eyed. Whispering among themselves, you tarried only ten. We best know what they will say, when the exemplars in the path will say, you tarried only a day. And they ask thee about the mountains, say thou, my lord, will scatter them with a blast, and leave it a level plain. Thou will see therein neither deviation nor bend. That day will they follow the caller, having no deviation, and voices will be still before the Almighty. And thou wilt not hear save a murmur. That day no intercession will avail save one whom the Almighty has given leave and with whose word he is pleased. He knows what is before them and what following them, and they do not encompass it or him in knowledge. This actually is in the tone verses as well, this, this, this phrase, um. So it's a little, it's, it's, it's in a little bit different, uh. It's a little bit, bit different phrasing, but basically that God, uh, his encompasses, his knowledge encompasses all things. And faces will be humbled before the living, the eternal, and he will have failed who carries injustice. As in, he denied the proofs of God. And whoso does righteous deeds and is a believer, he fears neither injustice nor deprivation. And thus have we sent it down as an Arabic recitation and expounded therein warnings. That they might be in prudent fear, or it cause in them remembrance. And exalted be God, the true king, and hasten thou not with the recitation before its revelation, to thee be complete. And say thou, my lord, increase thou me in knowledge. And we made a covenant with Adam before, but he forgot, and we found not in him determination. Uh, if you remember, this to me connects with uh, him who purifies himself, so if you wanna purify yourself, you have to be determined, it's not an easy task. And when we said to the angels, submit to Adam, Adam, then they submitted, not so Ibelis refused, if you remember, if it all also refused, the same character. I mean, it's kinda like the archetype, right, Ibelis, this is a creature that uh, was uh. Ha- that is haughty and proud, really is arrogant. So he refused to obey God's command to submit to Adam. Um, then we said, oh, Adam, this is an enemy to thee and to thy wife. Then let him not turn you out of the garden, that thou be wretched. Uh, it is for thee to be neither hungry nor naked therein, and that thou suffer neither thirst therein or the heat of the sun. Then the shaitan, Satan, which uh, is, which means the adversary, which is what Ibelis became, he was an enemy. To Adam. Then the Satan whispered to him, saying, oh, Adam. Adam, shall I direct thee to the tree of eternity and a dominion that decays not? Then the Satan whispered to him, saying, oh, Adam, Adam, shall I direct thee to the tree of eternity and a dominion that decays not? Uh this is what uh Shatan, I guess, promised. To Adam that if he would eat this from this tree, he would get a dominion that decays not. Um but that's not what happened when he ate from the tree, just so it's just letting you know. Uh that you can see that he he's yeah, his his promises is a deception. And they ate thereof, and their shame became clear to them, and they began to draw over them of the leaves of the garden, and Adam opes- opposed his lord, so he heard. Then his lord chose him and turned towards him and guided, he said, get you down from it altogether. An enemy to one another, and if there comes to you guidance from me, then whoso follows my guidance, he will neither go astray nor will he be wretched, so. Get you down from it altogether, to me, this is referencing all of mankind now, uh Adam, his wife and his progeny. And that they will be enemies to one another, this is what you see in the world, by the way. More um men are enemies to each other, except the believers. But whoso turns away from my remembrance, he will have a straightened life and we will gather him blind on the day of resurrection. He will say, my lord, why hast thou raised me blind when I was seeing? God will say, thus our proofs came to thee and thou didst forget them, so thus art thou this day forgotten. Now, a lot of interpretations exist about this, my understanding is that if you turn away from God's remembrance, then you are in deep trouble. Anyway, to continue, one cent one twenty seven, and thus do we reward him who commits excess. And believes not in the proofs of his lord, and the punishment of the hereafter is more severe and more enduring. Does it not then guide them how many generations we destroyed before them in whose dwellings they walk, and that are proofs possessors of intelligence? Now, God in many places in the Quran says, travel in the land and see how is the outcome of those who were before you, they were stronger in power. And they till the earth, um and and basically, go look, go see, go see. You know, look at the pyramids, go look at the Colosseum, see, see for yourself, uh you know, God destroyed them. And were it not for a word that proceeded from thy lord and a stated term, it would have been requisite that they would be destroyed as well. So everyone's appointment is the day of judgment and uh stated term, this is known to God. Every man, every man has a stated term, similarly, every generation has a stated term as well. One thirty, so be thou patient over what they say and give thou glory with the praise of thy lord before the rising of the sun and before its setting. And some periods of the night give thou glory and at the ends of the day that thou mightest be satisfied. Now, again, the traditionalist uses this to give his uh five ritual, five uh times prayer, uh. Creedence, legitimacy, but I just take it to me generally that we should be glorifying God at these times. Um, you know, that's my understanding of it. And extend thou not thine eyes towards what we have granted some among them to enjoy the flower of the life of this world. That we might subject them to means of denial therein, and the provision of thy lord is better and more enduring. So if you get caught up in the material sta- side of the world, in this material stuff, then uh you forget God. And that's why it's a means of denial, so it's a temptation. And enjoin thou upon thy people the duty and be thou steadfast therein. We ask thee not for provision, we provide for thee and the final outcome is for those of prudent fear, so. Now, definitely, my understanding is that here the word salat means glorifying God, because that's what was talked about earlier. And if you remember, this was the command that was given to Musa to establish the duty for my remembrance, so yes. Enjoy, Muhammad was being told, enjoying upon his people the duty and himself to be steadfast in it. Um. And they say, oh, that he would but bring us a proof from his lord, has there not come to them clear evidence of what is in the former scriptures? And had we destroyed them with a punishment before him, they would have said, our lord, oh. That thou hadst but sent to us a messenger, so we might have followed thy proofs before we were humiliated and disgraced. Um, say thou, all are waiting, so wait, and you will come to know who are the companions of the even path and who is guided, so. Uh this, that he would but bring us a proof from his lord. Uh the Quranic under, the Quranic point of view is that the proof that they are requesting is the destruction. And their faith will not avail them, so that's why it says, all are waiting, so wait, um, they will come to know. Anyway, that finishes up chapter twenty, let's continue with chapter twenty one. In the name of God, the Almighty, the merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. Draw nigh to men has their reckoning, while they in heedlessness are turning away. No remembrance from their lord comes to them anew, but they listen to it while they play, their hearts distracted. And those who do wrong conceal their private conversation, is this save a mortal like you, will you go to sorcery with open eyes? I mean, there isn't really much to say about this, this is the truth, I mean, honestly, if you just observe men around you, you'll see they are just playing. Um they're they're heedless, they're oblivious to the drawing near of the hour, uh. Which uh on at at which time, you know, the we we will all be given our just reward. Say thou, my lord knows what is said in the heavens and the in the heaven and the earth, and he is the hearing, the knowing. But they say a confused medley of dreams, but he has invented it, but he is a poet. So let him bring us a proof like that sent to the former peoples. No city be believe before them among those we destroyed, will they then believe? Now, if you know anything about Islam, the traditionalist has. A boatload of stuff that he attributes to Prophet Muhammad in the Hadid literature as he was working miracles, but. Um the Quran uh nowhere uh nowhere mentions any miracles that were performed by Muhammad. And this was one of the things, the point of contention, because they said, they said, you need to bring us a proof that was sent to the former peoples. Uh uh if you know anything about the Quran, actually, we just looked at it, Musa was given proofs, Isa was given proofs. Um Saleh was given proof uh to the people, but Muhammad was not given any proof, he was only given the Quran, uh which is sufficient, so. Um they 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 wanted to, I guess they were demanding this proof, but um. The only proof that would come to them would be the destruction, uh that would be it, so. So God says, no city believe before them, among those we destroyed, will they then believe, so? Even when the proofs were given to those uh messengers, uh their people did not believe anywhere, see, that's why God destroyed them, so. Will how will they then believe if God were to show them the proofs? And they wouldn't, that's the point, because if God seals your heart, you're done. Anyway, to continue, verse seven, and we send before the only men to whom we revealed and ask the people of the remembrance if you know not. Uh now, this is talking about the people who had the Al Kitab, uh who were reading the Al Kitab before, um. This, you have to understand, the Quran was sent down at a certain time and. Uh my understanding is that those scriptures were surviving at that point, the Torah and the Injil. Uh as far as the scriptures we have now, which are claimed to be those those books, Torah and Injil. Uh I don't think they are, I think they're severely corrupted. But regardless, we have the Quran, the Quran is preserved and the Quran contains within it the the Al Kitab, the writ of God, so. Um from my point of view, I take the Quran as the sole authority. So, but anyway, the me- the Mo- messenger Muhammad is being told, um. That we send before the only men to whom we revealed and. Go ask the people of remembrance, if you know not, this is directed to the disbelievers, those who are saying, uh, bring us a proof. And we gave them not bodies that ate not food nor were the immortals. Then fulfill we the promise to them and delivered them in whom we wished and destroyed the committed access, see, again, this is the God protocol in effect. The messengers come with a warning and they are mocked, ridiculed, denied, and the the unbelievers um. Try to seize them, and this is the point where God destroys that community and delivers the believers and the messengers, this is how it works. And then the messengers were men, this is important, see, and we gave them not bodies that ate not food nor were the immortals, so they all had a time. The they 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 ate food and they, you know, lived and died. Ten, we have sent down to you writ wherein is your remembrance, will you then not use reason? And how many city that was doing wrong did we utterly destroy and produce after it another people? And when they perceived our might, then did they flee from it, flee not, but return to that wherein you were given opulence. And your dwellings that you might be questioned, they said, woe is us, we were wrongdoers. And that their call cease not until we made them a harvest extinguished. And we created not the heaven and the earth and what is between them in play. Had we wished to take a diversion, we would have taken it from our as ourselves if we are the doers. But we hurl the truth against vanity and it trump- triumphs over it, and then it passes away, and woe to you for what you describe. And to him belongs whoso is in the heavens and the earth, and those in his presence, excuse me. And to him belongs whoso is in the heavens and the earth, and those in his presence are not too proud for his service, nor do they grow weary. They give glory night and day and they flag not, if they have taken gods from the earth who resurrect. Were there in them gods, save God, they would have been corrupted and glory be to God, the lord of the throne above what they described. So this is, this is very interesting, this is a very logical argument, so if they take gods from the earth. Who resurrect, what what does that mean, it means that, um. The idols that they have taken as gods, because they're made out of stone usually, which is coming from the earth. Or the people, uh the men that they'd have taken as gods. Um and they ascribe them to the power that they can resurrect, okay, if that's the claim. So here's the answer, were there in them gods, so them here is referring to the heavens and the earth. Okay, wh- if there were any gods besides God in the heavens and the earth, they would have been corrupted, the heavens and the earth would have been corrupted. Okay, now, do you see the heavens and the earth as being corrupted, or do you see an order? Okay, that's what I'm saying, if there were other gods besides God, then they would have been corrupted. Because those, they would have fought against each other, okay? And this is talked about somewhere else, that every god would have taken supporters and then they would have warred against each other. I'm paraphrasing, obviously, but this is the argument, so so logical, right? You see the earth and the heavens and a- as orderly, that everything is happening. Uh in an orderly manner, there is no corruption, so that. Proves that there is only one God, who who created everything, who is directing the matter, himself. He is not questioned about what he does, but they will be questioned. I I, you know, I, this this is something that really struck me, he's not questioned about what he does. Because you have people questioning God all the time, why, why this, why that, see, God, God is not to be questioned. This is the end of it, this is, there's no question in God, but they will be questioned, and here's the question coming. See, this is the question, if they have taken gods besides him, say thou, bring your evidence. This is a remembrance of him with me and the remembrance of him before me. But most of them know not the truth, so they are turning away, or they are disinclined, or they don't really care, that's what the word means, modus operandi, so. Here's the question, if you have taken gods besides him, if this is the claim. Then say to them, bring your evidence, show me where, where does it say, that there are other gods besides God? See, it's interesting, because this this actually, you know, what I remember, I was at, I was. Talking to a Christian, right, he he said, you know, well, you know, we believe that Jesus Christ is the son of God, et cetera, et cetera, and I remembered. And I asked him, I said, look, the Quran says, bring your evidence, so where is your evidence that this that Jesus Christ is the son of God, so then. Uh you know, he referred me to the Bible, but then he said to him, he said himself, he said, well, I know the word son of God in this. Bible is just a generic term, you know, because that's not how they use that word. Uh because, you know, in the Quran is also says that the Jews and the Christians say that they are sons of gods, sons of God, sorry. So, uh you know, in in the sense that we are like the beloved, right, so this is what he was saying, uh actually, in in the Bible, it also says. Son of man, so anyway, the point is that the word son is not used. Uh uh in the way that we understand this word to be used, so anyway, coming back to the point, uh. If there was no evidence, there is no evidence, we explicitly states that, uh but I mean, you can, you can verify, I don't. I mean, m- my understanding is this, and. Uh again, it comes back to bringing your evidence, so you know, we we can, we can ascertain what what that evidence suggests. Uh but all they have is wherein desires. And we send not before thee any messenger, save we reveal to him that there is no god save I, so serve me. If you remember, just before in the last chapter, this is what was revealed to Musa. There is no god save I, so serve me, um, actually, lo- let's look at that. Okay, so. Yeah, so this is what was uh revealed to Musa. See? I am God, there is no God save I, so serve thou me. You just gotta keep these things in mind as you read the Quran. And they say, the almighty has taken a son, glory be to him, but honored servants, precede him not in word, but they act by his command. He knows what is before them and what following them, and they intercede not save for him with whom he is pleased, and they are from fear of him in dread. And whoso among them says, I am God besides him, then that we reward him with Gehenna, thus reward we the wrongdoers. See, because they're telling a lie, they said that God, there's any God besides him. And also this intercession thing, if you know anything about Muslims, you know that they believe the same thing. That Muhammad will intercede for for them on their behalf on the day of judgment, the Christians believe that Jesus will intercede for them. And it says here, and they intercede not save for him with whom he is pleased, and they are from fear of him in dread, so this is. This is important. Have not those who ignore warning considered that the heavens and the earth were stitched together? Then we ripped them apart and made of water every living thing, will they not believe, will they then not believe, okay, now here. See, again, this whole idea, this fiction that you've been taught in school, that you know, the earth is. Rotating around the sun and, you know, it's uh, the sun is is orbiting a black hole and. You know, there's this endless space with thousands of planets, it's nothing to do with the reality, okay, guys, God. Created, uh considered, do you not consider that the heavens and the earth were stitched together? See, they were, they were, they were stitched together, as in they were both of the same material, okay, that's what it means, so God, you know, when they were ripped apart. Um, the heavens are still of that same material, which we, they're solid, is what I'm getting at, so. You can't go beyond them, okay, it's it's solid, it's a protection, okay, it's a, it's it's a roof, it's a ceiling. And made of water, every living thing, this is, this is important, think about that for a minute, um. How how do you grow a seed, you give it water, you you give it water, uh your sperm, your s- uh it is mostly water. Everything is, it has to, has to have water for it to to, you know, sprout to life, really. And we made in the earth firm mountains lest it sway with them, and we made therein mountain passes as ways that they might be guided. Now, again, the mountains, you know, this, if you go go away from the fiction that we thought in school. The mountains are anchors, this is what the word means, awasi means an anchor for a ship. Because the the earth is actually floating on the ocean, okay? And the mountains are are packing it down, so it doesn't, you know, keep bobbing, that's what it means. It, I'm just trying to show you the Quran have a different perspective, it's, there's no way you can. They're not compatible, because science is just, just, you know, what what you're taught about, you know, about things is not true. And we made the sky a roof protected, but they are from its true truths, they are turning away, see, it's a roof protected, it's it's solid. And he it is that created the night and the day and the sun and the moon, each in a circuit swimming, again. The sun and the moon are swimming, they're they're circling, see, they're in a circuit, okay? So it's not the earth that's moving around the sun or anything of that sort, it's the sun and the moon, maybe actually, if you look at the sun and the moon closely. Try it out, sometimes when it's uh overcast or when the sun's not really that bright, look at the sun. You'll see that a full moon and the sun, they're the same size, just look with your eyes. Obviously, I know most people will be like, man, this guy, but it's the truth. And we appointed no eternity for a mortal before thee, if thou wilt die, then are they eternal? No, so they they're basically, they are also going to their lord for judgment. Every soul will taste death, will taste death, and we will try you with evil and good as a means of denial, and to us, will you be returned? Now, to me, this means that when evil touches us, we should be praying to God and and repenting and. And um you know, understand that the evil that touched us is because of the. And um you know, understand that the evil that touched us is because of the deeds that we did. And when good happens to us, we shouldn't be exalted, but we should be thanking God for, you know, his mercy. So this is what I understand this to mean. And when those who ignore warning see thee, they take thee only in mockery. Is this he who mentions your gods? And they of the remembrance of the Almighty, they are deniers. See, they're making fun of Muhammad, because obviously Muhammad did not mention their gods. I mean, he was, he was believing in one God. That's what he was. Preaching, but they were making fun of him. And by doing this, they were forgetting God, the Almighty, their remembrance of the Almighty. Man was created of haste. I will show you my proofs, so ask me not to make haste, as in I will destroy you, but don't ask me to make haste. That's my understanding of it. And they say, when is this promise if you be truthful? If those who ignore warning but knew the time when they will not restrain the fire from their faces nor from their backs, nor will they be helped, see? Showing the proofs. But it will come upon them unexpectedly and render them speechless or bewildered. And they will be unable to repel it, nor will they be granted respite. Let's talk about. Death. Because when, when, when. When death comes to you, then that's the hour for you, right? You don't know how long you're gonna be dead after that, because one instance you die, when death comes and then when you wake up. For you, no time has passed, but it's actually judgment day now. See, that's what I understand to me. And messengers were mocked before thee, then they're surrounded those who derided them that whereat they mocked. Say thou, who can protect you by night and day from the Almighty, but they from the remembrance of their lord are turning away. If they have gods to defend them besides us, they are unable to help themselves, nor are they protected from us. See, if this is the claim that they have gods who will defend them from God. Then their gods are powerless, they are unable to even help themselves, nor are they protected from us. And this is actually touched upon in the story of Abraham, Ibrahim. Because that's what he did. He destroyed their gods except the, the biggest one. They weren't able to stop him from destroying them, because they're just inanimate objects. But we gave these and their fathers enjoyment until life became long for them. Have they then not considered that we come to the earth diminishing it from its extremities? Is it then they who will be the victors? Say thou, I but warn you by revelation, but the deaf hear not the call when they are warned, because God sealed their hearts. And if they're touch thee, them a hint of the, sorry. And if they're touch them a hint of the punishment of thy lord, they will say, woe is us, we were wrongdoers. And we will set up the balances of equity for the day of resurrection. So no soul will be wronged in anything, and though it be the weight of a mustard seed, we will bring it. And sufficient are we as account takers. And we gave Musa, Moses and Harun, Aaron, the division and illumination and a remembrance for those of prudent fear. Those who fear their lord unseen and are of the hour in dread. So as you know, the Musa was given the Al Kitab, which uh. Contained in it guidance and was an illumination and was a, a division between right and wrong. And a remembrance for those of prudent fear. By the way, this is the same, the, these things are also uh for the Quran as well, okay? And who are the prudent fears? He is telling you, this is the Quranic definitions. See, the prudent fear. And actually, in chapter two, in the beginning too, it also gives you certain characteristics of the Muttakin. So you can compile all these and you can get a definition of what the Muttakin is. Here it says, those who fear their lord unseen and are of the hour in dread. And this is a blessed remembrance we sent down. Will you then not recognize it? And we gave Abraham his sound judgment before and we knew him. When he said to his father and his people, what are these statues to which you are devoted? Now this word, tamasil means likenesses, which to me means that they were worshiping, you know, things that they, you know, like. I don't know if you know anything about, like. Pagan cultures, they, they, they take, well, anyway, let's just leave it at that. These were likenesses to which they were devoted, okay? These idols, basically. They said, we found our father serving them. He said, you and your fathers have been in manifest error. They said, hast thou come to us with the truth or art thou of those who play? He said, but your lord is the lord of the heavens and the earth who created them, and I am of those who bear witness to that. And by God, I will plan against your idols after you have turned and gone. And he made them into pieces, save a great one they had, that they might return to it. They said, who has done this to our gods? He is surely of the wrongdoers. They said, we heard a youth make mention of them. He is called Abraham, Ibrahim. They said, then bring him before the eyes of the people that they might bear witness. They said, didst thou do this, didst thou this to our gods, Ibrahim, Abraham? He said, but this, their great one did it, so ask them if they speak. And they returned to themselves and said, it is you who are the wrongdoers. And then they went back on themselves. Thou knewest that thee speak not. He said, then serve you besides God, what can neither benefit you at all nor harm you? Fire upon you and all that you serve besides God, will you then not use reason? So um this whole idol thing, okay, it's important because you get from this narrative. That uh they got really enraged. Uh when, when the idol should be protecting them, right? This, that was the whole claim. Uh they are, end up protecting the idols, because the idols can't do nothing, right? And he tried to show them, look, you, you know, uh they can't even speak, they, they, they can't protect themselves, they're nothing, you know? So why do you worship them? Just on a side note, I know I've touched upon this before. Um the Kaaba is a stone idol, okay? Muslims, a lot of people in the Quran alone space. You know, even though they say they believe in the Quran and all that, they still um vire this idol. They think that this is something special. Uh they pray towards it, they, they talk about going and doing the Hajj, which is just pagan ritual. Uh this, this idol, this, this is an idol, okay? The Kaaba is an idol, you, you, it has no s- special significance. It's actually. By you giving it any importance, um you, you think it's gonna help you, okay? And it's not gonna help you. And uh anyway, I don't wanna go on a rant here, but anyway, understand that the Kaaba is a stone idol. This is really what the story of Abraham is about. You know, he turned away from the idols of his people, which he found. Because they only were worshiping them, because that's what they found their fathers doing. And in the Muslim case, this is precisely what the Muslims are doing. They are only worshiping this idol. They think it's important. They think they have to go there and do the ritual uh worship there and the circling and all that stuff. Because that's what they found their fathers doing, okay? Because the Quran nowhere gives you that, uh there's no evidence in the Quran to support that. Anyway, to continue. They said, burn him and support your gods if you are doers. We set o fire, be thou coolness and safety upon Abraham. And they desired a plan for him, but we made them the greatest losers. And we delivered him and lot to the land we had blessed for all mankind. So he, God delivered him, as in his people were destroyed. This is reading between the lines. I suggest you look at brother Gans work, the God Protocol. Uh but yeah, that's reading between the lines, because he was a messenger, he was sent to his people. They're denied and they actually tried to kill him, right? They wanted to throw him in the fire. And as a result, they were destroyed. That's what I get out of this. And we gave him Isaac, Ishaq and Jacob, Yaqub in addition, and each we made righteous. And we made them leaders guiding by our command and revealed to them the doing of good deeds and the upholding of duty and the rendering of the purity. And us they served. And Lot, Luth, we gave him judgment and knowledge and we delivered him from the city that was doing bad deeds. They were an evil people, perfidious. And we made him enter into our mercy. He was among the righteous. And Noah knew when he called before, then we responded to him and delivered him and his household from the great distress. And we helped him against the people who denied our proofs. They were a people of evil, so we drowned them altogether. And David and Solomon, Daud and Solomon, when they passed judgment concerning the tilt. When the people, when the sheep of the people had strayed and pastured therein, and we were witnesses to their judgment. And we gave understanding of it to Solomon, Solomon, and to each we gave judgment and knowledge. And we made subject with David, Daud, the mountains giving glory and the birds, and we are the doers. And we taught him the making of garments for you to protect you from your might. Are you then grateful? This is God talking about uh him giving the knowledge of how to create, make armor, chain, chainmail is what it's called. To protect them from, you know, the swords and all that stuff. And to Solomon, the wind raging, running by his command to the land that we have blessed, and we knew everything. And among the Satans were those dying for him and doing work besides that, and we were over them a guardian. And Jo, and Job, Ayub, when he called to his lord, adversity has touched me, and thou art the most merciful of those who show mercy. Then we answered him and removed what was upon him of adversity. And we gave him his household and their like with them as a mercy from us. And a reminder to those who serve, reminder that we should call to God and uh look for his. And, and supplicate him for, for his mercy. And Ismail and Hidvis and Dulku Phil, each was among the righteous. Ismail, Hidvis, Waziel, Kifel. I don't know who the, who this personality is, but it doesn't matter. Anyway, these were all men of God, basically. And we made them into, enter into our mercy. They were among the righteous. And Dul noon, this is uh. Jonah, Yunus. When he left in wrath and thought that he would, we would have no power over him, then he called in the darkness. There is no God save thou, glory be to thee, I have been among the wrongdoers. So we responded to him and delivered him from distress and thus do we deliver the believers. Uh if you know about his story, he um. Basically ran away and, and you know, then full, and, and be, and you know, stored on the ship and then he was thrown in the river, in the ocean. And then the whale um swallowed him and then, you know, he called out to God in the darkness, in the belly of the whale and then God. Delivered him and then he went back to his people and then they became believers. So we responded to him and delivered him from distress and thus do we deliver the believers. And Zachariah, Zachariah, when he called to his lord, my lord, leave thou me not solitary and thou art the best of inheritors. Then we answered him and gave him John Yahya and made right his wife for him. They competed in good deeds and called to us in hope and fear, and they were humble towards us. And she who guarded her chastity, we beat into her of our spirit and made her and her son a proof for all mankind. This is talking about Isa, Jesus. This your community is one community and I am your lord, so serve me. But they divided their affair between them, all are returning to us. See, the men who came after them, they divided the, the religion into. They divided the doctrine of God into sects, that's into, you know. Basically, they all started following their own uh cults or whatever. And whoso works any righteous deeds and is a believer, there is no rejection of his effort and we are writers for him. And a prohibition is upon a city that we have destroyed, that they shall not return. Many Yajuj and Majuj have been loosed and they from every elevation hasten forth. And drawn nigh has the true promise, and then the eyes of those who ignore warning will stray. Stare, woe is us, we had been in heedlessness of this. The truth is, we were wrongdoers. See, this is how the chapter started out. Drawn nigh to man has the reckoning and then heedlessness are turning away. So drawn nigh has the true promise. See, this is. This is connecting with that. And then the eyes of those who ignore warning will stare, woe is us. This is just general unbelievers. Woe is us, we had been in heedlessness of this. The truth is, we were wrongdoers. You and what you serve besides God are the fuel of Gehenna. You will arrive at it. Had these been gods, they would not have arrived at it, but all are there and abiding eternally, see? They can't help themselves, they can't help you. One hundred, they have therein roaring and therein they hear not. Those for whom the best from us has preceded, those are from it far removed. They hear not a whisper thereof and they in what their souls desired abide eternally. The greatest terror will not grieve them and the angels will receive them. This is your day which you were promised. The day we fold up the heaven like the folding up of a scroll for the ritz. As we began the first creation, we will repeat it, a promise binding upon us. Truly, we are the doers. Yeah, and we decreed in the Psalms after remembrance, my righteous servants will inherit the earth. And this is a notification for people who serve. And we send thee only as a mercy for all mankind. This is talking about Prophet Muhammad, he was said as a mercy for all mankind. He is the messenger to all of mankind. Say thou, it is revealed to me that your God is one God. Would you then be submitting? And if they turn away, say thou, I have proclaimed to you all alike, and I know not whether near or fear is what you are promised. He knows what is public of speech and he knows what you conceal. And I know not, it might be a means of denial for you and enjoyment for a time. Say thou, my lord, judge thou with justice, and our lord is the Almighty, the one whose aid is sought against what you describe. Now, just so you know, again, the Muslim has this understanding that, the traditionalists has this understanding that Muhammad. Um if you read the Hadid literature, you know, it's full of things that Muhammad, you know, he knew, the signs, excuse me. Of the day of judgment, okay? Uh that this would happen and then this would happen and then, you know, et cetera. But here it says. Uh you can see clearly that Muhammad was not given any, any, any of that knowledge. He says. I know not whether near or far is what you are promised. It's not a day of judgment, he doesn't know. And uh and I know not, it might be a means of denial for you and enjoyment for a time, that the punishment not come to you yet, see? So you, you know, a lot of people would say, well, you know, it hasn't happened yet, you know? This is a means of denial and it's enjoyment for a time. As in enjoy yourself for now, but then you will face the, you will face your creator on that day. Anyway, that finishes up this surah. Yeah, we're over the one hour mark, so I'm gonna start on chapter twenty-two in the next session, God willing. Hope everyone is doing well. Peace and blessings be upon you.